Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 15th, 2013 to order. With the invocation being led by Commissioner Carl Rice Jr. Carl? Can everyone rise in the sumo reverent position?
Heavenly Father, I just thank you for everybody in this room. Lord, we have a lot of difficult and tough decisions to address. Lord, I just, I appreciate everyone showing up tonight. I just ask that you, that you provide them wisdom as they, as they get up and speak. I just, I just thank you for the blessings that you have given us. Lord, the, the, uh, excuse me, to paraphrase you, Lord, you know, you tell us too much was given, much is expected, Lord, and, and you mean that more than just in a monetary way. Us as leaders, people who, us who serve others, Lord, you, you expect us to truly look to you and your will as we, as we move about our business and make decisions for the best interest of the people in this county. And Lord, I just ask that you be with us all and that you just help us do your will. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
At this time, I would like to ask Tara P. Robinson's 5th grade class from Northwest Elementary, the Don't Be Afraid of Math winners, to step forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, please be seated. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Present.
Commissioner Leczka?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Palacek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Shatwell?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. entertain a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
No.
We have a motion in support. Any corrections, deletions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. This time, we've arrived at awards and recognition. We have been given a certificate of appreciation from the Summit Township Fire Department. That is in recognition of the training session they held this fall before the demolition of the Riverwalk Hotel. They were able to train not only firefighters from Jackson County and police officers, but also people from within the region and within the state of Michigan. This certificate is to show their thanks to the Board of Commissioners for being able to train their staff. Any communications or petitions to come before the board, please step forward and hand them to the clerk, please. You'll also have under public comment an opportunity to speak about these. If you could just hand them to her and she'll distribute them to the board. Yep, thank you, Mark. Motion to receive from Commissioner Leczka, support from Commissioner Elwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Any other petitions or communications to come before the board?
Move to receive.
Motion from Commissioner Elwell, support from Commissioner Leczka. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly received. Remember, under public comment, you will have an opportunity to address what you've given the board. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on the road commission. Please step forward, identify yourself, and if you'd like to speak about the road commission, please do. Remember, you're under the same rules of governance that we have for all public comment.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I'm Jim Spank. I'm a resident of Liberty Township. I'm also that township supervisor. When the committee was appointed and put in place to take testimony and so forth, I was invited to speak there. I will speak again and say the same thing that I said that morning. The bottom line in my mind is that the road commission should be made a department of county government. The duplicity and the lack of accountability to the commission from the Board of Commissioners is quite evident. The road commission boasts a HR department, which the county has. It has an individual who does payroll, wherein the county has a payroll department. Its services in the administration out there overlap what the county already has going. The decisions that are made in regards to contracts are made by the road commissioners, not by the finance committee, not by the county administrator, but by committees of the road commission itself. When administrative salaries are set, they are done by a vote out there. There is no oversight here, and as a matter of fact, there's very little knowledge of this board of what salaries even were out there until just recently, when this whole topic came up. I feel that accountability is there every so many years when the commissioners come to this body to be reappointed, and that, that should not be the case. They should be an advisory board, as the airport board is. They provide good input, good service as to which roads need to be evaluated and that process there. However, when salaries and benefits are set by other than the county and this board, I feel that that is beyond the scope of what needs to happen. Many times, things are said, well, we deal with federal finances and so forth. So does every other board. We angst over whether the sheriff makes $200 less than the undersheriff. We angst the fact that, you know, the prosecutor with a juris doctorate makes $107,000. But yet, we know little or nothing when administrative salaries are set for the operations director or the general director out there are, are set at $98,000. And the, in my mind, the interesting part is, the operations director can't even make a final decision on a driveway permit. It has to be brought to the board. We have individuals that deal with people safety who make nearly 20% less than the operations of the road commissioners. A former sheriff's deputy, that, that just doesn't equate. But yet, we worry about $200 of what the sheriff makes less. That kind of accountability just doesn't, doesn't set well. When the experience is there on the board where we have a deputy administrator who has handled budgets far bigger than our county road commissions in Virginia with their road commission, when we have a county administrator who has had experience running a road commission in northern Michigan, we do not need an independent board handling that aspect. When we are not replacing drivers, but yet we are replacing administrators' positions in the road commission, and we, we stretch those resources of the drivers on the road, but yet we consider spending money on security glass, and again, do not set additional monies for drivers to be replaced when they retire or leave service. I would urge each of you to vote for disbanding the road commission and setting it up as a county department with the operations director as a department head.
Just 30 seconds, Jim.
That is what I would, from a supervisor's position, let's spend our money elsewhere and not on raises that don't need to be had.
Marston Fortress, Spring Arbor Township resident. Like Jim, I'm also the supervisor of Spring Arbor Township. I would urge the board not to change the governance of the county road commission. Spring Arbor Township has had excellent service from the road commission, and they have been very responsive to any requests that I have made. As I peruse the report, it appears to me that the maximum savings is about $180,000 per year, which is slightly more than 1% of their annual budget. It's, it's a big number, but quite frankly, it's really not significant when you look at the percentage. And from my experience of years of cost reductions and downsizings, gaining those savings is sometimes more difficult than to project them. Employee morale was also an issue, and my experience is that anytime that there's a union management situation, there will be morale problems in the organization. If you go through downsizings and rightsizings, or whatever you want to call it, where you're affecting people's livelihood and that of their coworkers, there's going to be morale problems, definitely when there's concessions in insurance and benefits, sometimes wages. Those cause, I was going to say hate and discontent, but morale problems, and that can also come from home, as well as amongst the employees themselves. A change in the management is not a silver bullet. Those things are going to continue to go on as the economy plugs along here, and that's going to be something that's going to be an issue, whether it's the county board that's dealing with it or the road commission. I don't think that the reasons presented by the subcommittee are compelling enough to change the governance of the road commission.
Hello. I'm Mike Grant. I'm current chair of the road commission. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for all their diligence in looking over this process. Having read the report as Mr. Brown and Mr. Overton had put together, most of the items that were presented there are pretty, pretty consistent with the, with the information we've provided them. And as far as all the collaboration with the county, as it currently is right now, we always, we already collaborate with our IT and GIS with the county. The, right now, we currently don't do HR with them, but at the same time, our HR department is limited to next to nothing. We have Marilyn pretty much oversees HR and payroll, so it's one person doing the clerical duties, organizing receipts. And that was probably the only reason we never collaborated with the county with HR is because we didn't feel the immediate need for it. With the, with all the, all the contraction we had had in our management staff, we, we have had great number of reductions, as noted in the report, that I don't, I don't know how much leaner we could get than we are right now. As, as I, as I go on, this becomes a personal choice between the county as to how they want this place managed. I think they do have oversight over us as they give us direction on what they'd like to see the road commission become and how to go. We have not, as a board, become, doing the day-to-day operation of the board overseeing the exact morale of the employees. And we're all, we've even talked that if, if this comes out that we're not taking over, it's something we need to address. We had looked over the policy of the, of the commission and only that, and, and that would be our oversight, that maybe we should have looked more for the personnel. It does, it does, it is a little disconcerting that you have employees that are the backbone of the organization that feel they're overlooked, and that was never our intent and never should have been. The only thing I look at in this whole process is, our biggest concern is, is the insurance. And, and from the commissioner's standpoint, the numbers, I, the first thing is, is everybody has had to shop insurance, be it their, their home, their auto, or their business. And there's always that chance that that first-year savings goes away in the subsequent years. And that is one of my big concerns. We actually spoke with Ingham County, reference to their insurance rates, and Mr. Conklin explained that they had not gotten a renewal figure of a raise because they're only six months into their current insurance, so there's not a very good comparable at that point. I would ask that, at the very least, we consider postponing the vote on this resolution for one year, so we can sit and look and find out what the outcome from Ingham County was and what Calhoun County is as far as the insurance. If in a year's time, they come back and they say that their rates will be consistent, that they will consider, can be consistently this much reduction, then I would, I would say that this is probably the right choice. Because ultimately, I think this really comes down to the only real cost difference is the insurance. And I would remind you that right now, in our current situation, we're due for rebates annually. Once we no longer become the road commission, those rebates end the day we no longer exist, and we will not get them, get them again. Those rebates go back 10 years, and that's how, that's where they close their books because of the lawsuits and other things that happen along the roadway. As, as everyone of you know, that unfortunately, that when something goes bad along the roadway, they have someone to blame, and government's usually that person. Thank you, everyone, for your time, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve. It has been an eye-opening experience for the five years.
Good evening. John Wilson, City of Jackson resident. The commission tonight should take the advice of the ad hoc commission and eliminate the road commission. Responsibility for all road issues can be fully placed on the director of operations, county administrator, deputy administrator, and the nine member of Jackson County Board of Commissioners. Any commissioner who doesn't believe the road commission should be eliminated should then explain what they believe government consolidation means to them. Our current county administration is competent enough to handle road commission issues, and I'm sure the county commission is also competent enough to make informed decisions regarding county road issues. Our current road commissioners should be thanked for their service, but a truly more democratic process needs to be in place when spending tax dollars, and that democratic, democratic process is best suited to those who are democratically elected.
Any more to be presented in the public hearing? Seeing none, at this time, I will close the public hearing. At this time now, we've arrived at the regular public comment. If you'd like to come forward and speak under public comment, this would be the time to do it. On other issues that have come before the commission, please step forward and identify yourself. And all the rules and parameters still hold?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Mark Muehich. I reside in Summit Township. I provided the council with two packets of documents, which I hope each of you have. I'll discuss the first packet about recycling very briefly. I was unfamiliar with the commission's protocols. Last month, when I submitted some of these same letters, they didn't seem to make it into the minutes, or I don't know if they were shared with the other commissioners, so I'm resubmitting them, hoping that they're, one, be acknowledged in the minutes, and, two, that for the benefit of the new county commissioners, you can look at some of the comments that some very knowledgeable and professional recycling experts from around the state have said that our county would benefit from hiring a recycling coordinator. I'll look forward to working with you and with the Public Works Committee in the near future to figure out how we can pay for that. It seems really appropriate that now that we're talking about the road commission, in the second packet, you'll find several documents dealing with oak wilt. Oak wilt has the potential of being the next worst thing that could happen to Michigan forests. It could be as bad as the Emerald Ash Bore. It could be as bad as the Dutch Elm disease. I lived in Jackson as a child and can remember huge, huge oak trees, Dutch Elm trees dying, which was almost unavoidable. Oak wilt is completely avoidable. If the county were to do its research, talk to the state forester, whose name is Roger Mech, M-E-C-H, his name is on this first, first page with a picture of the oak leaves, give him a call, he's expecting your call. I told him I was going to bring this up to the county. He will advise you that the best thing to do would be to pass an oak wilt ordinance, the substance of which is that the oak should not be touched between April and July. And when he says touched, he means not touched, not a branch, not a twig, anything, because the tiniest incision in a, in an oak bark can make it prone to infection by the oak sap beetle, which carries this fungus. And as huge as an oak can be, 200 years old, one beetle can kill that oak in a matter of a month. So before the next spring season and sap starts running, I would hope that you would contact Roger, he's expecting your call. Start thinking about creating an oak ordinance, get all your committees, all your crews that work on the roads, make them aware of this problem. Jackson technically doesn't have oak wilt, but I know that it does. About half the state does. All of Wisconsin and all of Minnesota have it. They've lost hundreds of thousands of oaks already, and if you don't care about trees, just think at least, no matter the budget, you're going to have to appropriate to remove dead oak trees. So I'd be glad to talk to anybody about this, but this is the next really big problem for the state of Michigan. So please take the time to call Roger, and thank you for your time.
Thank you again, John Wilson, City of Jackson resident. The new nine member of Jackson County Board of Commissioners can tonight send a loud and clear message to their employers, the taxpayers of Jackson County, that this commission will begin the new year as true stewards of citizens' tax dollars by denying a pay raise for the county clerk, treasurer, prosecutor, sheriff, and drain commissioner. As Commission Vice Chair Duckham stated today during a radio interview, it's expected that elected officials, quote, "do more with less," end quote. And if any commissioner is struggling with this issue due to the fact that cost of living expenses has gone up, well, cost of living expenses, including insurance premiums and co-pays, have gone up for everyone. And if any commissioner believes that using a comparison study on what elected officials may receive in comparable counties to compensate our elected officials, this type of compensation methodology only drives up the cost of elected officials' salaries everywhere. So please, don't try to justify pay raise for any elected official by using comparable data from other counties. Instead, debate the pay issue, keeping in mind the possibility of a $3 million 2014 budget deficit and what austerity measures may have to be used to rectify that. And most of all, keep in mind your employers, the citizen taxpayers of Jackson County, and what most of them have to endure to make ends meet on much less than what our elected officials are paid today. I can't say who may deserve more pay for what they do, but each one of those up for a pay increase knew what their pay and benefits were prior to running for elected office. I thank each and every elected official for their public service.
Hello. My name is Timothy Johnson. I live on Sum 44 at Woodfield. I'm here today to tell you a little bit about my Eagle Scout project that I am doing. This Eagle Scout project is on a memorial that I would like to build in Blackman Park on farm firefighters and police officers who are that in line of duty. This project itself will cost about $10,000. All the donations and everything will be put into a trust fund that I have at City I've just been trying to go around to all the fire departments and police departments, just trying to figure out how many deaths they've had in their station. Fortunately, it hasn't been very many. I have approximately about nine police officers and a county right now, about 10 firefighters. The memorial monument will go in Blackman Park, like I said. It'll be on South Jackson Street and West Michigan Avenue downtown. I like this service project I'm doing the most out of all the ones that I've figured out that I want to do. I just figured that these people who have paid the ultimate sacrifice should have a little bit more of a recognition for something that they have done for us. This monument will be weather resistant. I've tried to make it so that the maintain of it won't be as hard. It's just something else that you're going to have to mow around. The trust fund account that I have set up in City Hall is with Kelly Hoover. I have been working with her for about, almost a year. She's been helping me with the trust account, and we have thought of a couple of good ideas with this account, like we are going to make it so that when this memorial monument is built, we'll have money left over for any future plaques that were to go on the monument, so the families of the fallen heroes will not have to pay for that extra cost. Thank you for your time, and let me come and speak and show you and tell you guys a little about my project.
Marston Fortress, Spring Arbor Township. Haven't changed my name to protect the innocent since I was here last. I'd like to speak to the issue of pay raises. I've heard three things bantered around which really strike a negative chord with me. One is that they knew what they were going to get paid when they took the job, so, so be it. And I don't think any of us, when we take a job, expect that that's where we're going to be paid forever. We expect to be compensated and recognized for what we have accomplished and what we're doing. Second thing is, you're lucky to have a job. And that's kind of demeaning to a person who's out there doing their best, working hard, trying to make a contribution to an organization, and I think all of our department heads are. And the last is, if you don't like it, you can just leave. And that has always kind of been a... And that has always kind of been a statement which I have recoiled against. Those three things I've dealt with for 45 years in business, and I've always rejected those when dealing with people. If you're not going to give them a raise, there ought to be a better reason than those three, which I've heard bantered around from time to time. I do think that our department heads deserve to be compensated fairly and competitively. We want to attract the best people that we possibly can to elected office. We expect them to perform at a high level. And certainly, I think that due to the economic situation that we've been in, all of our department heads have stepped up and made cuts to their departments. They've been creative in reducing expenses, and I believe they deserve to be compensated competitively, and they deserve a pay raise in line with what other folks in the county have received.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings of standing committees to come before the board. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of the December 11th, 2012 regular meeting of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners. I have a motion from Commissioner Elwell, support from Commissioner Rice. Any comments or corrections or deletions? Let it be known that the clerk will be attaching the correspondence that was received at the December meeting to the record that's being kept. All in favor? Opposed? Now arrived at the consent agenda. Motion from Commissioner Lescka, support from Commissioner Duckham. Any items to be removed? Seeing none, let's use our electronic devices to vote. The consent agenda's passed. We've now arrived at standing committees. Standing Committee's Chairman for County Agencies and Affairs is Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, David. Human Service Commissioner Chair is Commissioner Julia Alexander.
We have no business to bring before the board this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We've arrived at Personnel and Finance, chaired by our Vice Chairman, Commissioner Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have before us the matter of elected official salaries. The attachments are divided out amongst the five elected officials with the clerk and Register of Deeds first, and we'd like to decide them separately, please. Looking for comments.
Do commissioners prefer to comment first on this, or do you want to have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Entertain a, Commissioner Duckham, we'd entertain a motion, please.
Any motion, please.
Okay.
I'll so move the Personnel and Finance Committee's recommendation on the clerk Register of Deeds.
Do we have support?
Support.
Commissioners, we have a motion and support. Anyone like to speak? Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do support the motion. I know there's been informal talk about potentially amending the motion for the clerk Register of Deeds based on the amount of work and the savings that we've got by combining those departments. I think the recommendation from the Administrator's Office was 5.6%. 4% is what came out of committee. I actually made the motion on the 4%. I've thought about that, and if somebody were to make a motion to amend it to the Administrator's recommendation, I would be supportive of that.
I would so move, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and an amendment, and the amendment reads, strike 4% and go with the Administrator's recommendation?
Yes.
Does everyone understand that? We'll be voting on the amendment first and then the full resolution. Any more Commissioner comments on the amendment? Mr. Alexander?
Thank you. I just, for reference, in the summer of 2011, the Board of Commission voted to merge the two offices of the county clerk and the Register of Deeds, and it was not a vote taken lightly by many of us had a lot of concerns with the negative impact of this merger. While at the time, no action was taken on the salary increase for the newly created elected position overseeing these two departments, no mention was made that it was unacceptable either. I think an assumption was made at that point. The estimate in savings by eliminating the Register of Deeds position is $57,000 to the county. The original plan stated that elected officials would receive an increase of the 5.62% from the original clerk's salary and the additional responsibilities for another entire important department. When I made that vote, I did it with some reservation that we continue to acknowledge the importance of the deets that are saved and preserved at our county level, and I believe we have an obligation to follow through on that original plan. I am in support of that increased percentage.
Any other Commissioner comments? At this time, I'd like to vote on the amendment. A yes vote would strike the 4%. At this time, that passes, the amendment has passed. At this time now, we're to the full resolution, which moves the salary to the stated percentages that the Administrator had recommended. We have a motion and support. Does anyone like to speak to the resolution? Seeing none, I'll ask us to vote. Resolution passes. Commissioner Duckham?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Next up, we'll have the, trying to find, I've lost it here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move the motion from Personnel and Finance on the sheriff's wages.
Support?
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Lescka?
I would support raising the sheriff's salary, the 2%, that was rather than the $500 that came out of committee. I voted against that resolution in committee, and I voted against it because of the $500. The fact that the sheriff makes less than the undersheriff, there's no law out there that requires that the employee in a department make less than the department head, although I think that it's wrong that the department head doesn't make more than the undersheriff. Given the fact that we're looking at under, chief deputies in all of these departments in the future, or at least I think we are, I would support the full, or the Administrator's recommendation on this issue rather than the motion that came from Personnel and Finance.
Is that an amendment? Commissioner Lescka? Motion for an amendment?
I'll move to amend that resolution to the recommendation of the Administrator.
Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion and support for an amendment to move the compensation from $400 to the Administrator's recommendation. Anyone like to speak to the amendment? Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it was $500, if I'm not mistaken, not 400. I feel very strongly about that motion, and I think in part, in principle, is why to move it. There have been conversations about, is it necessary that a elected official should make more than their chief deputy? I say yes, just on principle. The dollar stops with them, or the buck stops with them, not the subordinate.
That's right.
And so I support that $500. If you look back to the documents that we've got provided by the Administrator's Office, much of this conversation came from the cost of health care, to try and compensate for that. But the truth be told, not all the elected officials take the health care package, therefore they do not see an increase in the health care, and this position is one of those. So it's hard to justify it on that basis alone. I'm also very dissatisfied with the job that we, myself included, have done through the years in watching these salaries. I think that we have most recently come to learn that some of the salaries of the chief deputies may have gotten to the places that they're at without the full approval of the board. I think it's been an eye-opening experience for us. I will later support at a different meeting, looking at those after study and thought, but I just feel very strongly about it. I think now is not the time to be giving large raises. The exception is the clerk that took on the Register of Deeds, but again, I do support this $500 raise just to put him, being the sheriff's position, in front of his chief deputy. But again, especially knowing that he does not incur any additional health care expenses, it even seems more inappropriate. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner, Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During Personnel and Finance, quite frankly, I said a lot, so I will just make a quick point here. For me, when I looked at this, my perspective on this, and then talking with several people, and this was mentioned by the public as well, even tonight, for people throughout Jackson County, thousands of people, have had their insurance premiums raised, their deductibles, their co-pays. This is not something that is unfortunately unusual. It's happening everywhere. And for me, I cannot, like the other elected officials that we're discussing, I cannot discuss, or let me rephrase that, I cannot, I can't support any 2% raise to offset insurance premium costs. Again, from my perspective, the public doesn't get that kind of bailout, and neither should our elected officials. So I, again, do not support the amendment. I support what came out of Personnel and Finance. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, we'll be voting on the amendment. If you vote yes, you'll be voting for the Administrator's recommendation. The amendment was defeated. At this time, you'll be voting for the, what came out of committee, which is a $500 increase Resolution from committee has passed. Commissioner Duckham?
Mr. Chair, next up, we have the Drain Commissioner. I believe the recommendation from the Drain Commissioner was no pay increase.
The recommendation to come out of committee was no pay increase.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Support.
And support? Any Commissioner comments? Mr. Elwell?
Mr. Chairman, for the same reasons I previously stated, I'll be voting yes on this recommendation, which means no raise. One additional comment, as I think I talked about this in committee, is, again, back to the issue of compensating for the cost of the additional health care. My math on it, unless somebody can explain otherwise, the pay increase would be more than what the health care increase would be, on top of my other objections to the 2%. So I'll be voting yes for this. Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be voting yes on this also, and it's no reflection of the service that these elected officials provide. We have a big budget issue coming up in 2014. I think we have to be careful with handing out money right now. If it wasn't for the big budget issue we're looking at, I'd love to give everybody here a 5% pay raise, because I think they all do a fine job. But as County Commissioner, our job is to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and I cannot see doing any further raises here. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be in favor of a 2% cost of living raise. I think that people are worth what they work, and a 2% increase is what we allowed for all the other employees. And this board's decision to hold itself at a 2%, at no raise, is its own decision. But to, in my way of thinking, penalize other people that work full-time and are expected to work for this county, most of them in a full-time capacity, and basically as department heads, and yet we want to treat them otherwise. I think that a 2% increase is minimumly what they deserve, and certainly they deserve what we gave everyone else. So I would be in favor of the 2% increase for all the other elected officials.
Is that an amendment? Commissioner Mahoney, a motion for an amendment?
It's just my opinion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other Commissioner comments? Resolution passes. Entertain a motion for the recommendation that came out of committee?
So moved. Support.
We have a motion and support. Any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Elwell?
Say a little less each time. Just want to echo Commissioner Duckham's comments, and I wish I'd made them earlier, that I do appreciate the job that our elected officials do, and my unwillingness to give out raises is no reflection on that. I'm sure I won't win a popularity contest with them, but that's not what I got elected for, and again, I do appreciate the great job that they do, and I will be supporting
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
Just to do what I previously said, I do appreciate the work that they do, and to try and support our administrator, and them trying to work with the elected officials, which we evaluate him on, I certainly will be in favor of a 2% increase. I will be voting no.
Any other Commissioner comments? Let's vote. Resolution has passed. Entertain a motion on the resolution?
So moved. Support.
We have a motion and support. Any Commissioner comments? Do we recognize, on behalf of the prosecutor? Motion carried. Commissioner Duckham.
That'll be all of our business tonight, and Personnel and
We have now arrived at unfinished business. Item 14A, Resolution 01-13.8. Resolution dissolving the Board of the Jackson County Road Commissioners and transferring all of its powers and duties and functions to the Jackson County Board of Commissioners. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would so move the resolution.
I have a motion and support. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did serve on the Ad hoc Road Commission Committee, second or third committee I've served on in 11 years. Appreciate the hard work of the committee. I appreciate the hard work of the road commissioners and the employees there. And I am supportive of this resolution, but I'll say upfront that it's no indication, from me anyway, that I think they've done a bad job there, because they have not. I think there are natural efficiencies that will come from bringing the operation of the road commission under the operation of the County of Jackson. But again, it's not a reflection on them. There's been numbers thrown around. I really don't think that we'll know the full picture of what we can save until we've been in operation for some time. But I see great efficiencies in operation, just the way the county itself operates, and especially with the high-performance organization usage that we have here. So I will be fully supportive of this. Thank you.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm not in support, at this time, of this resolution. When the state first passed its law about whether or not a road commission could become elected, or whether or not a county could make its members to five, I really think that, at that time, we could have made a decision to bring the road commission under the county. We did not. We have seen a lot of changes and a lot of good things that's happened under the new road commissioner structure. And I think those efficiencies and working with this Board has continued. I do think that perhaps we should have looked at having those, we're looking for accountability, is what it sounds like, certainly not a great financial difference. But I do think that we should have looked at perhaps having them become elected, if we're looking for additional accountability. But I do think that the road commission has operated in the last five years very well. So I'm not necessarily, at this time, in favor of bringing it under the county. And so I will be voting no.
Commissioner Alexander.
Thank you. And I don't know if I need to apologize for my prepared notes, but maybe when I become a more experienced Commissioner, I'll be able to do what you're able to do. The Michigan Board of Commissions has the opportunity to transfer the powers currently held by the road commission. This amended law is part of the Governor Snyder's ongoing effort to consolidate governmental operations in these changes in evolving times. In addition, state legislators are now even beginning the conversation in regard to road funding structure, the problem of having a revenue stream that does not meet the level of services desired by citizens. This is an issue that must be addressed. One of the concerns I have in making this change is that the public perception may be that significant additional monies will be spent to maintain and improve the roads if this transfer of the Board takes place. It is, needs to be clearly stated that there is no additional capacity within county's general fund to subsidize the road programs. Without any revenue changes, the county would still be limited to the same constraints that hinder the road commission. Since 2008, the road commission's primary source of income has been reduced by 7%. While health care and fuel costs have increased dramatically, road commission's 76 employees tend to 1,863 miles of Jackson County roads, 24/7, and they are to be acknowledged for the services they provide. In looking at the options presented to us, I have considered the following: the best interest of Jackson County taxpayers, the motoring public, and the current 76 road commission employees. I have asked myself if this would be fiscally responsible and promote our Board of Commission mission statement, as well as our strategic priorities. I have reflected on the unintentional consequences as well. At this point in time, I am not adequately convinced that adjusting the policymaking Board for the road commission is the right move to make for the motoring public or Jackson County residents. Knowing this decision is significant at many levels, and if approved, cannot be reversed, my vote is not at this time. What I am sure of is that the opportunity the Governor gave us by enacting this legislation has allowed us the opportunity for conversation, investigation, and review. In my opinion, we have already seen positive changes, and I believe these difficult conversations will better serve our community. Knowing that we have until the end of December 2014 to make this decision, I will be voting
Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to state some observations. I feel the County Road Commission does a fine job delivering the service to the citizens of Jackson County. I also feel the County Road Commissioners do a fine job of policymaking and oversight of the road commission. And I'd like to stress, there's nothing wrong with, with the service that the public is receiving from the road commission. And I think they all should be proud, road commission and the road commissioners should be proud of the job they've done. However, I do believe it's an opportunity to save money through the economy of scale, and by that, we can improve service to Jackson County even better than we have been receiving, and possibly have money left to order by newer equipment, expand the repairs that's happening on the roads, and to, to even better improve the, the services the county residents receive. As stated, it's working fine now, we, I just think it can work better, just because it'll have more money to work with if, if we do this dissolving of the road commission. So I will be, I will, will be supporting the resolution dissolving the current road commission structure.
Mr. Chairman. I'll highlight some points here. I've read reports, I've read other documents, I've talked to our administration, and have been told plans are in place to move forward. I've talked to the other county departments about the road commission, and the resources that we have, and I have received positive feedback. I've listened to road commissioners and the road commission personnel. And, as I've said before, this is not about the performance of the road commission. In fact, since I've been elected County Commissioner, there have been many occasions that the public has contacted me, I've contacted the road commission, and between the two of us, we've got the job done. I understand that we have until the end of December 2014, a little less than two years to make a decision on this. On the other hand, I also understand that this current Board of nine commissioners, with the term that we have of about two years left, will be the same nine commissioners then, too. So for me, there's no reason not to make the decision tonight. County commissioners, by nature of our elected position, we are involved in the community. We talk, we talk to people in the community. We go to our township board meetings. We go to a lot of various functions. So again, just by the nature of our elected position, we are in touch with the community. And doing my homework on this, I have talked to the public, and among many comments I've got from the public, I'll just throw one out there. Actually, the majority of the people thought county commissioners already had the road as responsibilities. Let's throw that out there. My decision is based on the vision for Jackson County, on our strategic vision, and whether we can improve what is good and make it better. Can the road commission improve as a county department? Serving our community even better, which all of us want? And the answer I got from all my research was yes. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Mr. Elwell.
Mine is brief. I believe that in my reviewing the enabling legislation, there was wording in it that allowed for a reversion back to an appointed road commission at some later point in time if a Board of Commissioners were to choose to, to take over the duties. I asked Adam just a second ago, and I believe that is an accurate understanding of it, Adam, I don't have a copy of the enabling legislation, but I, I think there was a comment that, once it's done, it can't be undone. I don't take doing it lightly, and I think it is the right thing to do, but there is wording, to my recollection, in there that would allow us to redo that if we felt at some point in time that we needed to. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, let's vote on the resolution. Any new business to come before the Board? Seeing none, we've returned to public comment for the second time. If you'd like to address the Board, please step forward and identify yourself. You have three minutes this time. Seeing no public comment, Commissioner comments? Mr. Elwell?
Again, just to thank the Board of Road Commissioners and their managing director, Ken Straubith, for the great job they've done. As Commissioner Rice has said, every time I've interacted with them in the last 11 years, they've taken care of the problem, and this action is not anything about that. They've done a great job, and I appreciate the hard work they've done, as well as the staff out to the road commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Alexander.
Thank you. I would just like to publicly commend Eagle Scout candidate, Tim Johnson, for his efforts in raising funds for Jackson County's fallen firefighters and police officers, and encourage my fellow commissioners to make a donation. Commissioner Elwell has already put that request out to Commissioner Duckham and myself, so I will pass that challenge forward to each of you to support his worthwhile efforts. Thank you, Tim.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none. I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session, discuss, to discuss illegal opinions from our legal counsel and current litigation. I have a motion and support. Okay. We will adjourn and go into closed session.